All right. It is six o'clock. We will adjourn from the executive session and there is nothing to report. And at six o'clock, we will open the city council meeting on Tuesday evening, April 25th. I think our furry friend over there said it's time to begin this meeting, right? So, all right. Kim, are you ready with an implication and pledge?
God, we come before you tonight as a community of people and animals, all full of love and hope and thanks. And thank you for this opportunity to reward those among us who are doing good things, our first responders, our Kerrville Pets Alive group, Delane Seigerman and her really desire to help understand the homeless situation, for all of the staff that's here preparing for these meetings each and every night and preparing us as council members to be able to make those important decisions. Please continue to guide our actions, to guide us in respectful communication and thoughtful actions and to really do these things to enhance our city and to really glorify you and all that we do. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have some announcements for us?
Thank you, Mary. I have three tonight. Let me say good evening to everybody first. And let me say to Louis over there, for once, you can write that this meeting has gone to the dogs. It is a good thing. All right, we have, if I can get it up on the screen, we have three items, events that we need to talk about. And I will talk about it as soon as I put my glasses on. Kerrville Parks and Recreation Apartments Concert by the River Series starts again this Friday, April 28th, 7:00 PM in Louise Hayes Park. So, we invite everybody to come out, enjoy the great music. It's provided this week by The Flashbacks and Robin Mordecai. And I've seen The Flashbacks, I haven't seen Robin, but that's a great group. So, again, the event's free and I encourage everybody to come on out. There will be a Cheetahs food truck and a Trailhead Beer Garden truck on site, so we'll have beverages available. We'd like to thank Krenwoggy Motors for helping make this event happen. All right, it's a big week. Early voting is underway. This week, early voting began in the 2023 city council election. Early voting continues every weekday this week and Monday and Tuesday of next week. Only one place to remember, the Calo City Center. Election Day voting will be Saturday, May 6th, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So, we encourage everybody to go out and vote. And finally, we want to say congratulations to our finance department. They were awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. And that's a mouthful, but that's a big deal. It's for the city's fiscal year 2023 budget. This award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting, and this is the 38th consecutive year that the city's finance department has been so recognized. And that will do it for me. I'll turn it over to you, if you have any announcements.
All right, thank you. Council, anyone with an announcement you would like to make? I just want to say, this afternoon, we had two photo ops, one at the Doyle Center and or at the Carver Park and one up in the parking garage. And they are art that has been done by individuals in our community, beautifully done, both of them. And I just encourage anybody who has not been to see them, take a look, they're just delightful. And then I would like to just mention one other thing. There's been a lot of misinformation about our drinking water and just out in the public. And something to the effect that for the last seven years, the city has been cited for cancer-causing chemicals in the water. And I just think it's very important to people know that that is not so. The city of Kerrville has not been cited in the last seven years for any drinking water violations. And there were three regulatory tests. The last three that were performed have shown our drinking water is well below the regulatory amounts of, and I'm just going to use the initials, TTHM. So, just know that and make sure, get your correct information, go to the water department if you have any other concerns about that, any other questions, please. All right, we have a lot of presentations tonight. So, let's get started. And the first is Delane Seigerman and the Kerrville Sisters in Service. So, if you ladies will, I guess, maybe not all ladies. I think this is good tonight. It is ladies, okay? Please come up.
Thank you for the compliment.
Come on up here and.
Oh, that's right, we should be up there. How soon we forget.
Good to see you. Hey, good to see you. All right. City of Kerrville recognizes Delane Seigerman and Kerrville Sisters in Service with the April 25th, 2023 Kerrville Kindness Award. Delane Seigerman and the Kerrville Sisters in Service recently completed a second annual count of the homeless population in Kerrville. The purpose of these counts is to support the local homeless community by identifying unmet needs while offering information on existing or new programs or services available, raise community awareness of the homeless, and the third is to provide data for the state in preparation for future grant applications on the end of the homeless community. During the count, Seigerman and the Sisters in Service team passed out goodie bags.
I mean, at their own expense, they put all the contents in those bags, Sisters in Service, so we couldn't do this without you all. I mean.
This is a big deal for these. That is great. And it has personal hygiene items, paper information, snacks, socks, and other essential necessities. The Kerrville Kindness Program offers a sincere thank you to Delane and the Kerrville Sisters in Service for their commitment to serving their fellow citizens, and it's signed by all of us. We thank you for what you have done and just appreciate it so very, very much. We know who Delane is. Tell us who you guys are and how long have you been with Sisters in Service?
My name is Jennifer Nuttallie, and we started Sisters in Service back in late 2020.
And I'm Leslie Robertson, happy to be a part of it.
I think, Jennifer, weren't you the founder of Sisters in Service?
Yes, ma'am. Started from a Bible study that was holding in my home after COVID hit. So, it's just grown and it's been wonderful to give back to our community and just to do the best we can and shine light.
And what is your mission, your mission?
To grow in Christ and look for others who need help physically and spiritually.
No wages, no requirements, anybody. That's great, that's great. Delane, you want to say a little bit about the?
Well, I would just say that, you know, for the grace of God, there goes me. When I see a homeless person, I think, that could be me. You know, if things happen in life that change your path and it's not always easy to get back on your path, sometimes it's more than one thing, three or four things at once. So, I would say that it's a good reminder to me that I have a lot of blessings. So, I want to do this just for that reason, then possibly help somebody, never mind.
Well, I hope so. Great thing for the community. And Delane, we have one for you, we have one for Sisters in Service, and you probably need some photo ops here, right?
Got it, you nailed it. Confidence is high.
All right, you know, I didn't bring any doggy bones. Tell them I'm sorry, I'll make it up. All right, we have Kerrville Pets Alive. So, will you guys come up? All of you, furry and non. All right, we'll let you gather up here. I think this is the first time that we have gone to the dogs. That's right.
And cats.
And a kitty. And where is our kitty? Oh, there she is.
Lot of duress.
How sweet, how sweet. All right, well, thank you all, we're delighted you're here. City of Kerrville recognizes Kerrville Pets Alive with the April 25th, 2023 Kerrville Kindness Award. Kerrville Pets Alive is a nonprofit organization dedicated to saving adoptable cats and dogs impounded at Kirk County Animal Services from euthanasia. KPA volunteers are determined to see that every shelter animal in Kirk County gets a true chance at the life they deserve. Recently, recognizing that the city of Kerrville is responsible for picking up deceased animals, KPA donated a microchip scanner to aid the city in identifying those pets in hopes of bringing some sense of resolution and closure to their owners. The Kerrville Kindness Program offers a sincere thank you to Kerrville Pets Alive for their commitment to serving the local pet community. Thank you all. Now, I'd like to ask you, please, tell us who you are, how long you've been with Kerrville Pets Alive, and who your furry friend is, if you have one.
All right, Tara Leganza, this is Nala, and I think it's been probably right at a year I've been with Kerrville Pets Alive. And I, yeah, I'm trying to do the events and the volunteer coordination, you know, it's all volunteers, so it's a lot.
All right.
I'm Karen Johnson. I jumped in a year ago when we had to go to the Ag Barn and stretch out Kirk County Animal Services during a big seizure. And I am now the Dog Rescue Coordinator and I love it every minute.
I'm Shelley Sandy, one of the founding board members, and I'm also the Pet Placement Coordinator. Busy time of year.
I'm Judy Jackson, and I've been with KPA, I guess, about two years. This is Kami, she's a rescue dog, and I run the food bank at Kerrville Pets Alive.
Okay, all right. So, I need to bring my dog biscuits to eat outside.
I'm Wendy Grunna, and I've been on the board since January. I'm the interim treasurer, and I'm also the co-chair for the Furball.
I'm Susan Burns, I've been with Kerrville Pets Alive for about four months now, I think. I volunteer at the shelter, giving the cats some love on the weekends, and I'm co-chair of one of the Furball committees, the Live Option, and I'm also helping with Sundays.
My name is Brianna Larson, and I am a founding board member of Kerrville Pets Alive since 2019. I currently serve as the secretary on the board, and I also chair one of the committees for the Furball.
And I'm Diane Thornton, I'm a volunteer with KPA. I've been with KPA for, I think, about a year and a half, and I volunteer for as many things as I possibly can.
My name is Karen Jones, I've been with KPA for about a year and a half now, and I work a lot of the offside events for fundraising.
I'm Nora Zizer, and I just started volunteering this fall, mostly for events.
Good.
I'm Kevresha Moran, I guess it's been about a year now that I've been with KPA, and I am the sponsorship chair for Furball this year.
Hi, I am Taylor Pennell, cat wrangler. I've been with KPA for a little over a year. I started off in the office helping out there. Now, I'm mainly a cat foster. This is one of the foster kittens now that we're wrangling, this is Arlo.
Oh, I'm Kayka. These are my personal dogs, because I've been doing it for about two years now. Mainly, I can tell you that I lost two collies two years ago, and they were not microchipped because it was COVID, nobody was doing anything. And they were never seen again. So, microchip your dog.
And you guys have events and do that for free, so.
Yes. I'm Pierre Douré, I'm the president of Kerrville Pets Alive, and almost four years in the running with Kerrville Pets Alive, and appreciate all these wonderful people that make it happen.
So, these two are available?
No. They used to be, but we adopted them.
And we have somebody, is she hiding?
Yes.
One more, Kerrville Pets Alive, come on down, Brenda, you're part of this group. All right, down, you guys want to get in?
Get in there.
Do you want to get on one end or?
I'll do that. Did everybody?
Yes, good. Keep scooting, keep scooting. I'll direct you from back there.
Let's do one more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I am too. Take me with you.
Mayor, I think we ought to have a cat.
I have two questions, actually. I have a question and comment. I have a real question, and I've never asked you, Brenda, but if we have a cat that was a stray and so it kept coming to our house, and we ended up finding out that it was microchipped, and so we attempted to call and contact the owner, and we're unable to do that, and eventually it's just been part of our home. So, my question is, how do you re-microchip something or a pet, or can you do that?
You're going to change, you know, read the microchip, call the company, and re-register the chip.
Okay.
Some animals actually do have two microchips. It's better just to have one, re-register that chip to the owner. It always registers with the implant company as well as the owner. And in the case of our chips, they register back to Kirk County Animal Services. So, it's a good thing you have that ring under the shelter. Yeah, so.
And then also, I like having emotional support animals under here.
Yes.
Y'all should explore that for future. Thank you, thanks, Karen.
All right, I think something's happening that I don't know about.
So, for those that don't know, Public Works takes care of collecting these animals, so.
Deceased animals.
Deceased animals.
From the roadway.
So, luckily, we have a dedicated staff member that takes care of these responsibilities and these tasks, and it's not an easy task. So, Mr. Jerry Pierce, otherwise known as JP, he typically goes above and beyond to try and locate the pet owners. But I think, you know, your generous donation of this tool just adds value to our program, so we really appreciate that to help, you know, pet owners bring closure. So, thank you very much.
Wonderful. We talk on the phone often. Yes, good to see you. Yeah, so, can I pay you, please?
Sure.
Okay, so, we've talked several times, he is so kind, there are so many people that their pets are their only people, the only thing they have, right? And there's not closure sometimes when they can't find their animal. And he is so kind that we talk about, have you found?
Yes.
But there's never any closure. And so, Shelley Sandy, who's our cat rescue coordinator, who's been a huge advocate of microchipping, she's the reason why we have a microchip program and provide free microchip, I just wanted to recognize that. Because of her, we have our program, and the microchip scanners are so important, we hope to get them to every entity, including the fire department as well as the police department. And we gave one to Ingram Police Department not too long ago. But this is a great tool, and it's kind of, after you scan the animal, it's a little bit difficult to research, and so if you'll contact us, we'll be glad to do the research. And we actually could demonstrate to them how it works right now if you want to, if we have time. Yes, okay. No, go right ahead. Okay, you want to bring Kelly? Kami, sorry.
She gets called lots worse.
Okay, so I know Kami is a microchip, so we're basically going to press the red button right here, it's going to start reading. And we get a beep, and we have a microchip number, which registers to, actually, she's got a PetLink microchip, which we're familiar with. And so, we make the phone call to PetLink, and they get our identification information, and we reach the pet owner. And so, we're able to really get pets back with their family so they don't end up at the shelter, and in your case, give closure to the family about the animal. So, anyway, we're glad to meet you. And here's a little goodie bag for you. Aww. Don't have a charge in the business. Let them do this.
Thank you.
That's really nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great, thank you, guys. All right, Chief Maloney, I think you've got some presentations to make.
I do, so. I'll have the crews come in. This is an excellent segue from our recognition of Kerrville Pets Alive, so for our unit citation of merit. You just come and set.
I'll call them over the radio.
Right, yeah.
They're hesitating.
Not use the iPods.
Come on up front, all of you.
Good evening, everybody, thanks for being here.
Awesome. Tonight, I'm honored to present the unit citation of merit to C-Shift in recognition of meritorious and outstanding performance in overcoming difficulties under adverse circumstances. On March 12th, 2023, the Kerrville Fire Department responded to a structure fire on Ivy Lane. Upon arrival, there was heavy smoke coming from the structure, and the crews made an interior attack to extinguish the fire. During their efforts to extinguish the fire, the battalion chief was advised by the homeowner there were seven pets trapped inside, to include six cats and one dog. The crews quickly extinguished the fire, started ventilation, and initiated the search and rescue to save the pets. Multiple fire crews were able to locate all seven pets, and tragically, all were found unresponsive due to smoke inhalation. The EMS crews set up a triage and treatment area and started to initiate lifesaving measures by administering oxygen using our pet mask. We are thankful for the teamwork of the crews to rescue the pets and provide medical treatment, the coordination efforts of Kerrville Pets Alive, Kerrville Police Department dispatchers, and to coordinate the veterinary care, the compassion of the neighbors and Kirk County SO jailers that live next door to help crate and transport the pets, and the willingness of the Kerrville Veterinary Clinic to provide extended treatment, ultimately to save five cats and one dog. I'll introduce tonight here, so with our crews, our battalion chief was Billy Williams. Engine one crew was Lieutenant Joe Bryant, who cannot be here tonight, driver Dan Fuege, Sam Hughes. Engine three crew was acting lieutenant Daniel Fitzsimon, so Mason Lindner is not able to be here tonight, Gunner Brown. Engine four was acting lieutenant Myron Feedler, Levi Malden, and Chris Moreno. Medic three crew was Wesley Bracy, Adrian Falcone, and Matthew Winkie. I also received the following email from the pet owner just a few days after the fire. "I wanted to thank all the responders who assisted in my house fire Sunday on March 12th. They showed so much compassion for my fur babies, even the ones that passed away in the fire, in getting my house fire put out in an efficient and timely manner. I am forever grateful for the community I live in and the help that was provided me during this travesty, and my family." Tonight, we also have the honor of the pet owner here, Mrs. Rhonda Samulowicz. Kerrville is a blessed community, and that neighbors come together to help one another in a time of need. We're thankful for the participant, the partnerships that Kerrville Pets Alive has fostered over the past years with our veterinary clinics to provide care in emergency. The unit citation of merit is a sincere appreciation for your outstanding lifesaving efforts to rescue seven pets from severe smoke inhalation during a working structure fire. This is a true testament of the teamwork to overcome unusual obstacles that we do not typically face when responding to a structure fire. Congratulations.
Get back in the middle of it. Get in the middle of it.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Two more presentations, so.
I'm eating cherry ice.
I know, that's just such a good story, so, that's awesome.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you all.
All right, I also have the honor tonight to recognize our firefighter of the year and our officer of the year. I'll start off with our firefighter of the year, Chase Lindner. I have the honor to recognize him as our firefighter of the year, as he was hired in March of 2019, and proves to serve with Travis County ESD #11 since 2017. He's credentialed as a paramedic, intermediate structure firefighter, driver operator pumper, American Heart Association instructor in basic life support, pediatric advanced life support, and adult cardiac life support, and also a Department of State Health Service EMS instructor. He serves on the SOU team, active threat task force, and is a field training officer. Chase exemplifies the meaning of a Kerrville. Chase exemplifies the meaning of a Kerrville firefighter and paramedic. He is devoted to the department with a passion to serve our community. He serves with values of professionalism, integrity, commitment, and teamwork on a daily basis since the first day on the job. He's accountable for his actions and goes above and beyond the call to ensure the job is done correctly. He exhibits and takes interest in many classes, certification, and most of all, takes the initiative to do what is needed and is expected as a firefighter. His passion is to be a firefighter and proud of the profession and traditions. He sets the example for those around him through dedication, discipline, and hard work. He strives to build the team's camaraderie through laughter, lightheartedness, and the occasional joke. So he is respected by his peers and officers with a get-it-done attitude. He is patient and takes the extra time to explain the process of training scenario to the newest recruit, to the most experienced firefighter. The past year, Chase has participated in numerous team-oriented classes, requested to be a part of several teams or specialized skilled positions, and is actively pursuing many certifications to further his knowledge and trade as a firefighter. Chase engages at any opportunity to improve his professionalism from training in big water classes, advanced auto extrication, tactical combat casualty care course, basic SWAT, active attack integrated response train-the-trainer course, National Wildland Courses, Fire Instructor One course, and even finds the time to build burn doll houses to teach the recruits all this within last year. These are just a few of Chase Linder's outstanding qualities and traits that earned him the 2023 Firefighter of the Year. They're going to want pictures.
Got a smile.
Go forward. Read deeply.
Lieutenant Monty Johnson.
So I have the honor to recognize Lieutenant Monty Johnson as Officer of the Year. Monty Johnson was hired in October 1997 and a fellow graduate from Tavi High School. Monty is credentialed as a Department of State Health Service Paramedic, Fire Instructor One, Advanced Structure Firefighter, Driver Operator Pumper, Fire Officer Two. He serves on the medic, as the medic team leader for the SOU team, chair for the recruitment committee, active threat task force, and is a field training officer. Monty works for Alert, the advanced law enforcement rapid response training, and travels all over the nation teaching the active shooter to law enforcement and fire and EMS agencies. He initiated and instructed the Alert Active Shooter Training last summer, which brought together over 200 personnel from all Kirk County law enforcement agencies to include the Kerrville Police Department, Kirk County Sheriff's Department, Ingram ISD, Constables, Parks and Wildlife, and the Kerrville Fire Department personnel just months after Robb Elementary School shooting. This collaborative effort identified the importance of a joint response and continues to improve our capacity to respond to these active threats. Monty will continue to bring additional active threat training and education for all agencies to improve their response. Lieutenant Johnson has exhibited exemplary leadership in stepping in as the role of the SOU medic team leader. The team leader is responsible for organizational needs, scheduling training, maintaining equipment, and handling needed responses. Monty has excelled and instrumental in all aspects of the responsibilities of medic team leader. He has assigned many additional tasks in relation to the SOU team and has always gone above and beyond to assure the tasks are completed as assigned. He is a leader that is dedicated to the safety of our responders and our community. Monty is admired by many fellow colleagues for his dedication to the Kerrville Fire Department. He loves sharing his knowledge through training, scenarios, leading through excellence, and willing to make his brothers better on a daily basis. There are many other often overlooked instances that Lieutenant Johnson is a part of that don't always get recognized. These are just a few of Lieutenant Monty Johnson's outstanding leadership values that earned him the 2023 Officer of the Year.
And picture time.
Fellow graduates.
Okay, everyone's good?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we have one last, and I believe this is a proclamation for the Kerrville Board of Realtors. Do we have some individuals? Good. Thank you, guys, for being here. And what did I do with my glasses? I can't do it without them. All right. Okay, City of Kerrville proclamation. Whereas April 11, 2023 marked the 55th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law, Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, which, as amended, prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States. And whereas the Kerrville Board of Realtors is an organization of real estate professionals subscribing to a higher level of ethical standards, pursuing personal and professional growth through information, education, community involvement, while advocating for private property rights and property ownership. And whereas the Kerrville Board of Realtors is committed to highlighting the fair housing law by supporting programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities and planning partnership efforts with other organizations to assure every citizen their right to fair housing. Now, therefore, I, Judy Eichner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Kerrville Board of Realtors Fair Housing Month. And that's right here in Kerrville, Texas. And I urge all citizens to recognize and support the fair housing law, so, which you guys do every day of the week. So tell us who you are and how long you've been a Realtor.
Okay, I guess I'll start. Ladina Odom relocated Kerrville in 2020. I've been a Realtor since 2014. So it's been a long, sort of good time. But enjoy Kerrville. I've been here to kind of work both areas, and I'm here. So really getting acquainted with the area.
Good.
Yeah, it's nice. I've been a Realtor for four years.
I'm Mona LeBlu. I'm the association executive at the Kerrville Board of Realtors. Been doing this position for sixteen and a half, almost seventeen years now. And actually, prior to, I was with the Texas Association of Realtors and also the Abilene Board of Realtors. So I've kind of made real estate my career without having a real estate license.
I'm Lenny Isles, and I'm chair of the PR committee. I've been a Realtor of about thirty years. Wow. Yes. And I love it. And it's great to be a Realtor.
And this is my partner. Oh, right. All right, we'll give you this, Mona, and have some pictures taken. Again, pictures.
Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you.
Good. Congratulations. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
That's all right. All right, after all these wonderful things, I think we should.
I know, let's just go home. Yeah.
That was neat. Really, really neat. All right, we do have to do some serious business, so for our visitors and citizens forum, do we have anybody?
No, ma'am. We do not have any citizens signed up.
All right, thank you. And we're ready for the consent agenda. Are we ready for a motion to adopt? I will make a motion. Let's adopt the consent agenda as presented. Second, we have a second. Is all in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, we will move on. Our next several items are all second readings. So we have seen these items before, but we'll have a chance to ask some more questions if we need to. Drew.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Go ahead.
Ordinance Number 2023-12, second reading. An ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, such chapter more commonly known as the City Zoning Code, by amending said code to revise regulations pertaining to the location of accessory buildings and structures within the front setback to fences, providing a cumulative clause providing for severability, providing effective date, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have three citizen speakers signed up.
Okay. You said three?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Drew, go ahead.
Just wanted to touch base with council. I have had several questions from citizens, clarifications, and just wanted to confirm some of the impacts on existing fences and structures. So same as before, a little bit of history. The current zoning code included fence regulations in 2019. This, of course, is amending those regulations. And we did have a building code update in 2021 that implemented the building permit requirement for fences above 30 inches. Again, the amendment goals were to allow for other non-visibly obstructive fence materials, not just wrought iron. Again, the current code allows only wrought iron in the front yard. To amend the restrictions from the setback consistent with the zoning district instead of limiting the front fence from the front line of the structure. So particularly, some of the large lot neighborhoods where homes are set further back, they couldn't put any solid fencing in their front yard. This would allow the solid fencing to come up to at least the standard front setback for that zoning district. And then, of course, just a defined screening fence, because we did not have a definition prior to this. Again, the variety of fencing that we've gotten requests for through the permitting process, both wrought iron with columns, the deer panel fence, and some post and rail style fences that you see here. Here's the exhibit, or the ordinance that you have. This is, of course, Section 60-50A. This section repeats in almost every zoning district, so the ordinance itself is quite repetitive. But this section does include, excuse me, the exemption for fences to be in the front setback up to six feet as long as they include see-through fencing materials. And we did add after the last meeting, posts or poles, posts and columns may be used as a part of the fence, but in no case may they be greater than 24 inches in width. Some of the questions that I also received the last couple of weeks relate to existing structures, fences, courtyard walls, and so on, and how would those be impacted by the adoption of this ordinance? So just wanted to clarify, currently in the zoning code are two sections that would relate to those, Section 118 and 120. 118 is for any non-conforming site element, which would include fences, may be repaired, maintained, or demolished or removed. If they are demolished, they could not be reconstructed. That would be a voluntary demolition. Someone's taking down the fence, obviously intentionally. Section 120 refers to damaged structures, including site elements such as a fence, that the non-conforming use or structure may be rebuilt, restored, or replaced after said building is damaged or destroyed by fire, flood, explosion, windstorm, earthquake, war, riot, or other calamity. If, and kind of summarize these real quick for you. You're not.
I'm sorry, can you go back for just a second?
Mm-hmm.
You're about to say when something that's non-conforming can be replaced.
Right. If it's damaged by basically any act of God, not a voluntary demolition.
Okay.
But damaged, as long as that meets these criteria, that you're not exceeding the area. Again, that'd be more of a building. But in the case of a fence, you're not moving the fence closer to the street or closer into the setback. It's not getting taller than the original fence. So if you're basically, if it's been damaged by some act of God and you are replacing with like-kind fence, it is still non-conforming and grandfathered. If it's the next, I'm going to skip ahead on the agenda. If it's more than 50% damaged, it requires a permit, but that does not change the non-conforming status of that structure. So as long as the reconstruction meets these five criteria, homeowner would be able to rebuild that courtyard wall, brick fence, picket fence, wrought iron fence, whatever the case is, even if it doesn't meet the current proposed rules. So that was, like I said, there was quite a few of the emails that I got were concerned with existing structures and then trying to clarify that new setback rule versus the current setback rule for front yard fences.
So you're saying in one situation, they don't have to get a permit?
If it was a small percentage of damage, they would not be required to get a permit and they could replace it with similar fence.
Less than 50% of any of the act of God?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd be pleased to answer any other questions before or after citizen speakers.
Anyone else at this time? Okay.
I, I just, I have a concern that the, about the amendment that was made about the poles, posts, and columns. I was wondering, where did we get the 24 inches in width?
We'd looked at several fence, existing fences that we were aware of around town that have brick columns. And there was obviously a range of the width of those brick columns, but most of them were around 20 to 24 inches.
Right. My concern is twofold. One, you've resolved onefold of the concern. The second is that council adopted at first reading an ordinance without an amendment, just as presented. And we are presented an ordinance, not really with an amendment. It's an ordinance, basically, we won't be approving this with an amendment. We're going to be approving this just Ordinance 2023-12. I would have appreciated if an amendment was going to be proposed by anybody that it would come to council and it would be, I know it's still a discretion of council, but it makes it seem as if it's already in there and it's going to be approved. And so I don't appreciate, it just, it doesn't show full faith in the fact that what council adopted is not exactly what we're presenting here in second reading. And so that's a concern for me, especially when you look at the minutes. It's probably going to say, we approved it on first reading and then second reading, we approved it, if we're going to keep it as is. But nowhere is it probably going to say that this amendment was made because there was no motion to make this amendment. And then my second concern is that I feel like we went from a very broad definition of what we're doing with the ornamental fencing to now, a little bit too far in overregulation in this definition, and I'm just not comfortable with it. My understanding from the first reading was that we would come back with some more discussion after concerns were relayed from, or ideas and suggestions and concerns were relayed from council members to city staff, that those ideas would come back to us and we'd be considering that. It doesn't seem like that's happened. And so with that, I just have those following concerns. Thank you.
I thought we asked you to come back with width at the last meeting.
That was my understanding. We did not have exact language as an amendment, but to include some language to account for posts and columns.
But was that done by a majority of councils, my concern? Because it could have been one, two counselors, but there was no vote to show that that was the will of council to be done. That's why, that's my concern. That was not in the motion. So originally, we did not have the sentence that's in there that says, "posts or poles, posts and columns may be used as part of the fence, but only in no case shall they be greater than 24 inches in width." That wasn't in the first reading. We got an email from staff that this was inserted in. And so my concern is that the motion that council adopted was to adopt the ordinance on first reading as presented. did not include that sentence. Now, in second reading, we're presented with an ordinance that has that amendment, when council as a majority never adopted a motion to make that amendment. So if that was the will of council to have that done, I think it should have been made in a motion, it should have been voted on. Otherwise, there was a direction done, amendments made outside of the meeting, and uh, yeah.
What was uh the direction?
Yeah, if there was some misunderstanding, staff clearly understood from council that you all needed additional clarity. You didn't have specific language that you provided, um but you wanted clarity regarding the posts, because that was the concern with the brick posts that were there from last time.
Yeah, I thought we, my memory of it is we had a discussion uh with specific points. Within a few days or weeks, we've received, a week or so, we received language to that effect by email. And now we're considering half of that discussion, yeah.
Right, okay.
I think that was, that's my memory. I'm sorry, Roman, that was not your understanding, but um I believe that's, we gave them direction to do something about the width of the posts.
Should have been clear by a vote of council, that's all I'm saying. Otherwise, there's no clear direction from council, if we don't have a vote or express it.
We have a, we have a video record of the meeting that we can-
You're right.
Any other questions for Drew before we hear some from citizens? All right. Our first citizen to speak, shall we?
Chris Barker.
Thank you. Do I start? Do I have to wait for a timer to come up or anything? All right. Um my name's Chris Barker, I live at six oh one Elm Street. Uh one, I, I wanna say I'm in favor of you guys, I want, well, I wanna thank everything you guys do. Um tonight, it actually looked kind of fun. Most of the times, it looks screwy and exhausting, but thank y'all and thank you guys. Um I, I'm in favor of changing the ordinance. I think the ordinance the way it is is much too restrictive, so I really appreciate you guys working to do that. I'm short, and this thing's short, so.
Can somebody help you get out?
Okay.
You're good.
But um and so uh what I do think, though, is since we're going ahead and, and changing this now, it, it would be, and, and I apologize for being late to the game, um but that we could maybe give it a little bit more thought and do something that makes um sense in more situations. I think this is still fairly broad. You know, I asked a couple of questions, and I really appreciate the feedback from council and staff ahead of time to help me and some other citizens understand what's going on a little bit better. Um you know, I asked about a certain property that has a wall, it's my house, um that would not be allowed under the ordinance as it's written. And I just said, you know, hey, i- if it's a new rule, certainly there's gotta be some reason for the new rule, or we wouldn't be where you, are, any part of the restriction would be for a reason, because we wanna maintain as much uh private property rights as possible. And I never got any feedback on, on a problem that's been noticed or seen or reported, or even a concern with, with our wall. And so, you know, I, I wondered, well, okay, so why the need for it to be so restrictive? The reasons throughout the different emails that I've seen given for this were primarily safety. And that's pedestrian safety, uh bicycle, uh vehicular. And, you know, part of my business in town is we run a construction company, and a big part of that is we build precast walls for residences and commercial and, and the state of Texas and cities all over the state. Um so we work with a lot of you guys often, and work with these codes. Um and, you know, as far as, I, I went back and checked and contacted some of the people, and in the seven cities around us that I contacted, you know, nobody had a thirty inch. There was three feet, there was four feet, there was six feet. Six feet was, there was only one like that, so I'm not saying that that's average or normal. But the point is, there's, there's no one, one fits all, right? I understand that you have to have sight at the intersections, but that can be accomplished in a lot of ways. And right now, what I see is we're saying that in a residential R one neighborhood, where there should be the least amount of traffic, um should be the lowest speed limits, that that setback has to be further back and shorter, right? Have to be not from the curb, but all the way back to the edge of my house. And, and that's, I can't go past that at all unless I'm thirty inches tall. Well, if I pull out of the car wash, right, kind of turn around, right over there, there's a six-foot tall wall that's thirteen feet off the curb. Well, my wall sits back thirteen feet off the curb now. Um and that's certainly a bigger danger to pedestrians and, and traffic. I would think crossing five lanes of traffic right there. So if, if it's safety, which was the only real concern I was given, I think we can, we can really accomplish that with not tying property owners' hands as much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarification question? Didn't we, I'm sorry, didn't we change it from being thirty inches up to six feet, as long as it was visible through there? And I know your situation, your house is, is, is different because of, you know, of the structure, it's solid. But I mean, as far as that, i- isn't that part of what we're changing here?
The current rules allow thirty inches, up to thirty inches solid, and the proposed rules allow thirty, up to thirty inches solid.
Okay, so the solid part stays.
Yeah. Up to six requires the see-through fencing materials.
So thirty inches, okay, two and a half feet.
Celeste Barker.
Hi, my name's Celeste Barker, and I am Chris Barker's wife. I also live at six oh one Elm. Thank you for this opportunity, and um thank you all for those who responded and answered my questions and my naivety, Drew, um at, uh trying to understand how it was written. And again, I also apologize for just now being aware of this situation. I was a little burnt out from short-term rental, so um I needed a break. Anyhow, I just wanna speak to our positive experience, um where we live at six oh one Elm. And many, our house is really visible, because we live by the park in the middle of town. But I did snap these photos. So this is a four-foot wall here in front of our house, and we do have a visible see-through gate and another one on the side. It do, but pop, it does pop up to six feet around, and, and so that's the outside. And here is from inside, and you can see, we can clearly see the intersection, the park. People can see us sitting on our porch, all of those things, okay? So I just wanna, like I said, I wanted to speak to the positive experience we've had with safety and our young children in the last ten years that we've lived there. That was a big reason why we did that. We live on the corner of Woodlawn and Elm. I know the speed limit says it's thirty, maybe less, but people drive about forty-five down Woodlawn, okay? I've tried to contact city in years past about putting speed bumps there or something, but it was kind of a laborious task, and I let it go at the time. But there is a crosswalk to the park right there, and, you know, there are sidewalks, safe, safer route to schools, um sidewalks. And I feel like that, living on that corner, that the speed of cars that flow through there has been really a big safety concern, which is why we put something like that around our home, so we could feel safe that our kids were out there running around. We've had trampolines in the front yard, we've had um house concerts, we have had playgrounds, um we've had kids over and, you know, family dinners. And so, you know, it really speaks to that experience. And no, it would not affect our current situation, but we do own another property down the street on four one four West Water, on another busy street, on another busy corner, where we had intended to do a similar thing, um which is how this was brought to our attention from a neighbor who told us about it. So I would, I do, I do appreciate the thirty-inch solid in the front. I had, in my emails, asked that it be considered that it be raised to forty-eight, which is four foot. I mean, for various reasons, structure, stability, privacy. Um our fence and wall is an engineered wall, okay? It can withstand, it has withstood um the Elm Street trees falling on it occasionally. It, it could withstand um some impact. I don't know the technicality of that, I'm not the engineer, that would be Chris. So um I just, again, I would like, and I would hope that that would be revisited to look at that front area, to give people a little more um leeway with that. Al- also, it requires less maintenance if it's done right. We, we don't have to do anything to ours. It's a sound barrier, and it helps keep our animals inside. So we have had animals that we've dog sat before, and they have gotten out of the wrought iron gate and the wrought iron fence in front. And we have been called by neighbors to find them and hunt them down. And so, you know, just other examples as to why we advocate for at a minimum that four-foot solid in the front. You know, I recognize safety and, and vehicular um visibility. And so, again, to speak to Chris's point, there are ways to manage that on corners, and I think we could probably address that with planning and zoning if that were to come up. So I'm not gonna overspeak, I've done that in the past, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Nick Gonogo, I live at three twelve Valley Drive. This is my house, I don't know if you can see it. Drew, help me out. Where's Drew? There. Thank you for sending me that. Uh I had some questions about uh, I'm in the process of, I was bidding to find a solid wall str- uh around my house for numerous reasons, but we basically like to hang out in the front yard more. We live this, I don't know if you can tell, this goes up on a hill. And if you could see where the line was, if I did the twenty-five-foot setback, I would be cutting off half my driveway. I don't live on a corner, there is no line of sight problems with my house. Actually, from the street, even if I had a ten-foot wall, you could still see my house fine, because I'm, I'm up on a hill. There's a gate right there that was there when I bought the house, um so it would be nice to use that. I'm just asking if we reconsider maybe the height of thirty inches. Four foot of a solid wall. Uh I know safety's been talked about. Uh I work for the Austin Fire Department, I've been a firefighter for twenty-six years. I've had numerous issues with kids, people getting their heads stuck in wrought iron fences, gates, because kids are kids, and they're being rascally, or people trying to climb over the fence, getting impaled on the top of the fence. I've never had an issue with a solid wall fence like that in twenty-six years. Dogs, I have a dog, I don't want my dog to go out front. Same thing as Celeste, our dog can get out of a thirty-inch wrought iron. I just, I like the amendment, thank y'all, that's awesome, I think it's great. I'm just asking that we kind of think about the height of the solid wall versus the wrought iron. I, that's it, I don't have much else to say. Everything they said, plus what I said. Thank you all, appreciate it, thank you, Drew. Thanks, everybody.
Hey Drew, is, is there, is there a recommendation, why staff would not want to, to go up to that, that four foot?
For this amendment, we weren't looking at increasing that height. The thirty inch, again, was with the twenty nineteen uh recommendation that we got from our um-
Was there a specific reason?
A lot of it stems from, not necessarily the corner lots, because there is um other ways to mitigate visibility at the intersection. But for your mid-block driveways, um you know, small sedan backing out up against a four-foot wall may not be able to see traffic coming down the street. Um so really, it's more the mid-block visibility concern for the neighbors' driveways. Our consultant originally for twenty nineteen rewrite suggested thirty inches as a common height. Um I agree with Mr. Barker. You're gonna, you're, you'll find an ordinance that has different heights anywhere. From that two and a half foot to six-foot or eight-foot fences. When we were working on the zoning code in twenty nineteen, uh we did get quite a bit of comments from neighbors, uh from, or at least neighborhoods, that didn't want to see the solid six-foot fences all the way up to the front property line. Uh so that's why we even addressed it in twenty nineteen. Uh but the biggest, like I said, the biggest concern is that mid-block uh visibility. Thirty inches, most cars could obviously see over it. Forty-eight inches, it's gonna be dependent upon what size vehicle you're looking at.
And I believe we, we had some fences that had gone up higher than that that were causing-
We, we did.
For some neighbors.
Yes, we had a handful of fences that obviously sparked that conversation through the rewrite. Most of those were five and six-foot fences, um so no vehicles could really see beyond that. Line of sight down the street obviously is impacted by a fence at that height.
How do we, uh work on like, the, an example that was given on the, the grade of the house of the land there? So if they're driving down, their house is clearly, or their car is clearly at a slant, and their driveway could end further down um on the land. And if they're further up, they can kind of see over that fence. So are there certain exceptions we're trying to put in place? Like, how are we gonna? That doesn't apply, I don't think, to every scenario. It would apply to flatlands, probably, but in certain situations, there could be examples where they could see perfectly fine over that, that four-feet, six-foot fence.
I have not, I've not seen or searched for examples that take the topography into account. Uh generally speaking, the grade of the driveway is gonna match the grade of the lot. So wherever that fence falls, you're gonna have that same height, at least at that point across the driveway. Uh so as you're intersecting to the street, at that point, whatever fence height, it's gonna be pretty close to where the driveway is, generally.
Can you remind me what that front setback is? Is that fifteen?
Depends on the zoning district, so-
Well, in-
R one single family would be twenty-five feet.
Can I say something? Sure. I've talked to several people over the last two weeks about this fence issue. And what I'm finding is that the, the four-foot uh solid fence is, is what they're more comfortable with because of a couple of things. One is the visibility of their children in the front yard. I mean, like it or not, we live in a climate where we have to watch our children more closely. We've had pets also that have disappeared out of front yards. And that four-foot barrier at least gives enough restrictive view that small children and animals are safer. So I, I know I voted on first reading for this, but I would really, really like to see a little bit more um private property rights, where people who feel like they need a little bit taller fence should be able to do that. And in the permit process, if somebody is midsection in a um, in a block, if you're doing the permit process and you, you realize that a four-foot fence is gonna obstruct people's view, then deal with that or, or do some compromising with the homeowner at that time. And that's, that's just what I'd like to add. Is that, doing something like that, Drew, it puts staff in a, you, you don't have specific guidelines.
Right.
Makes things a little more difficult, because there's not, you're, it's, it becomes subjective, and um-
We're gonna want clarity, Mayor, on exactly what it is the community wants. Uh and so if there's a desire to change the height of the solid fence, we're gonna need to go back through the process uh and kick it back to P and Z and go through, because we're not, we're not posted in a way that, particularly on second reading. And that's fine, um but it, it, if we're gonna make that level of change, then we're gonna need to go back through the process.
Mayor, uh-
And I may be in the minority here, but I just wanted to-
In the last meeting, um council member Hughes made the motion, I made the second. And I kind of agree with Brenda right now. I think, I think there should be some cases where forty-eight inches is, is fine. And if not during the permitting process, especially if it's in the middle of a block. And we had, we had someone come talk to us last time about noise abatement as well. And a three-foot fence is not gonna abate a lot of noise. Maybe chihuahua noise, but uh-
I would, I agree, I would, I would like to see it go back.
Okay.
Do you have a, a recommendation you would like to give to P and Z?
I recommend that we table this on second reading.
Would you further direct the staff revisit the, would you do that in one motion? Or s- if I wanted to move that we table it and direct staff to look at the solid height requirement and review that with P and Z and bring it back to council? Is that how the recommendation would work?
That'd be fine with us. To review it then, would be, if we had specific clarity on what those are.
Well, it sounds like what I heard is to, the consideration of four foot, um and also any, any, anything that we need to account for in the code that may represent certain um areas as far as location within a block. If that's- If that's even feasible, I mean, you know, if there's a reason that you need to, to make different requirements for, based on the, the location of the property within the block, the block face.
We could look at some visibility options as well.
It could also be just as easily as saying, if you want to build it, you have to do it this far off your property. And it's like that universally for everybody if we're worried about that visual concern on streets too. And that way, I think it solves the problem and then we can increase that height. Another suggestion.
So I guess that's my motion.
And I second that. You want to repeat that motion?
I have the solid height requirement of four foot take to the planning and zoning and areas. Look, review the areas in the block for the location for different requirements.
If necessary.
If necessary, yeah.
The only thing I would add, Mayor, is please don't take this that we actually listen to people.
Do we need visibility in, in yours at, at the end of that?
We can add visibility, such as visibility.
Okay, is, are you comfortable?
Yeah, we have a motion of second.
Okay, we need a second. Okay, Brenda seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. All right, Drew, we'll give you some more work.
We want you to sit.
No worries, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. All right, let's move on to 5B. Shelley.
For 2023-13, second reading, an ordinance amending chapter 26-38, construction offenses, chapter 26, Building and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances, City of Carroll, Texas, by clarifying what substantial repairs means, providing for an effective date and providing other matters related to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right.
I just wanted to clarify, this one does not impact the zoning amendments. This is just for the permitting piece, so. Yeah, recommend it on the second reading.
All right, do we have a motion, Council? Brenda, do we have a second?
Approve ordinance 2023-13 on second reading.
Do we have a second?
Kim?
All right, everyone in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. All righty. 5C, again, second reading. Yara Moll.
2023-14, second reading, an ordinance amending in its entirety, Article 8, unsafe building abatement of chapter 26, Building and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances, City of Carroll, Texas, regarding the abatement of unsafe buildings containing the savings and severability clause, providing an effective date and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Here to answer any questions you all have, any, and mainly defer to Mike if he has to.
All right, Council, comments, questions? Ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we adopt ordinance number 2023-14. Second?
Second.
Brenda, all in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. All right. Shelley.
Ordinance number 2023-15, second reading, an ordinance amending chapter 46, environment of the Code of Ordinances, City of Carroll, Texas, by adding new Article 4, junk vehicle, such Article to replace Article 11 in chapter 102, providing an effective date and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers.
Any new information, Yara Moll?
No, ma'am.
All right. Council, what's your desire? Do we have a motion?
I move we adopt ordinance 2023-15 on second reading.
Second?
Second.
Brenda, all in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you. All right, we are ready for 6A of resolution. Megan? And if you'll read that in, please, Shelley.
Resolution number 12-2023, a resolution approving the use of tax increment funding in the amount of $52,500 pursuant to a recommendation from the reinvestment zone number one, City of Carroll, Texas. Such funding to be used by the city as part of its local match for a community development block grant, all of which the city will use for improvements, including sidewalk and traffic signal reconstruction within the city's tax increment reinvestment zone. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Megan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to speak about 6A and 6B. I'm going to go ahead and give you an overall presentation on the community development block grant, just to kind of refresh your memory on where we're at with that. So I won't read through all of this timeline, but just to show you, we've been doing work on this since December of 2020. And so the most recent things that we've done in the fall, we've had our design finalized with our engineering firm for all of the projects downtown. In the spring, we opened our bid processes for the construction contractors. And most recently, we have bids received. The award process has been initiated and we're starting with you all tonight to move that forward. So we did receive three bids for this project and it's in three separate columns. The way it was bid was a base bid, which is the largest project at Earl Garrett and Water. The additive alternate bid is the Clay and Water crosswalks. And then the additive alternate number two are the tree wells. I put the total on the right-hand side, Drew, just to show you the entire bid for all three projects by each contractor. And just to remind you at the bottom, the total grant funding allocated for construction with grant funding plus our match only equaled $312,500. So we knew from the get-go with all the time that passed and everything that happened with COVID that we were going to be over budget. And this is exactly how much we were over. So tonight, we are looking to award just the base bid to Eleknor Belko Electric in the amount of $308,313.40. So I'm going to go over those different project areas just to refresh your memories.
Please do.
So this is the main project. It's at Earl Garrett and Water Street, and that's what is referred as the base bid. So here, just again, we are going to be doing signalization improvements on the mast arms. Then it's going to be doing safer pedestrian crossing, push-button signalization, and we will be ADA compliant there with the ramps on all four of those areas. It was brought to our attention, there was a concern about the star. Just wanted to let you all know, there is no damage being done to that star right there. And staff's actually planning to pressure wash that, so it looks a little bit better once it's done. The additive alternate number two is that intersection at Clay and Water. And that's where we are proposing doing the pedestrian crosswalks right there that had the three-way, the always stop. And then the third project was sort of what we chose for anything left over, which the main one was going to be for the tree well on Water Street. So again, just wanted to go back over this with you all. The base bid totaled $308,000. So we really don't have much room to do anything else. So staff's recommending moving forward with that base bid of $308,313.42, Eleknor Belko Electric. So 6A is in regards to TERS. So if you all remember, in spring of '22, staff came to you with an approval for a budget adjustment to the general capital projects funding to allocate this $52,500, which is our local match for the CDBG grant. So you all approved that. Staff identified the project is actually eligible for TERS funding. So we went to the TERS board on September 8th and they approved a funding request to come to you all to allow for TERS funds to pay for that local match. So that's the part of that. So we're just asking that you allow us to use that TERS funds for the local match. So just to reiterate, item 6A approves the use of tax increment funding in the amount of $52,500 to be used by the city as a part of its local match for this grant. And 6B is negotiation of an authority to execute a construction agreement with Eleknor Belko Electric for $308,313.40. Something else we did want to discuss with you all tonight, this is the additive alternate one. This is that Clay and Water. So currently, we do not have funding to pay to do this. But since you all did approve the $52,500 from the general capital projects funding, we, we were kind of trying to decide how we can maybe get this accomplished. So because the bids were so high from the three that we received from our process, we went ahead and got some bids from a local contractors. So for this area, we received a bid for $36,300. And we are wanting to try and proceed with this project as it aligns with the HHHC remodel, the Garage Streetscape project, and it's going to improve the pedestrian and ADA safety right there.
Megan, I don't understand the 52.5. I thought that's what you were saying was the TERS money for the signalization and pedestrian crosswalks here?
Yes. Okay, so let me, let me go back one.
Okay.
So tonight, on your agenda, this is what. So this is just kind of extra. So because we're coming to you all saying we have TERS that has agreed to fund this, there's still this 52.5 allocated in the general capital projects fund that hasn't been moved at all because it was appropriated for this reason. So we are trying to see if maybe we can use that funding for this. So it's $36,300 to try and get this area done as well.
Another area, okay.
So this is, yes, this is the, the second project that we're not able to fund.
Okay.
So we're seeking your recommendation or direction because we do have that option. Or in May, we have a special called TERS meeting that we are going to have. And we are wanting to know if you would like to use the CIP funding that we have already allocated or if you would like for us to approach the TERS board with this project to see if they would fund this one as well.
What's in the TERS fund right now?
Not that much, I know that.
At year-end, we had about $115,000.
Say again, Julie?
At year-end, we had about $110,000, $115,000 right there. And then we've already collected like 75%. So their budget for this year is about $280,000. So we're expecting, you know, I'm saying $270,000 just to be on the safe side. So we'll have a pretty, pretty healthy balance based on collections, just for some changes and valuations on commercial properties this past year.
Okay.
So that, that went up substantially from last year.
I, I would make one comment on this additional project. As we proceed with the Hard Hills Heritage Center, the only place where those people who visit that, really to park, is the parking building. And right now, they don't have a safe or ADA compliant way to get from one point to another. I know my sister's going to fuss up me about the stop signs, but I still think it's a good idea.
Yeah. The question, I think, though, is do we take it out of the general capital projects fund or do we want to ask TERS for it?
What do you think? What should we do?
I think we should ask TERS for it.
If they say no, then we.
Then, then we'll use this as a backup. Yeah, okay.
Well, and, and on, on another note to Councilmember Hughes, the good use of TERS fund.
It is!
Okay.
It definitely serves.
Yes.
Everybody, yes. It is not just for one specific.
Island greenery for one business.
That's right.
On the, on the main project, the lighting facing what used to be the bank parking lot, is that boom extending over the sidewalk or over the road? And the diagram appears to be over the sidewalk, I'm, over the, over the chairs.
I'm going to defer to Kyle to see if he remembers.
Good evening. Which?
The one nearest to Francisco's, the arm appears in this diagram to be over the seating area.
So the pole's actually going to be a little bit closer to the street. This is just a diagrammatic representation to bring forth to council, to grant works and TDA.
I'm sorry, I just want to know, is the arm going to be over the street?
I'd say it's, the, the arm will still be over the street. The pole will be, actually be closer, so there will be a little bit more room between Francisco, the current Francisco's and the, the new signal pole.
Thank you. I couldn't tell by the drawing.
Yeah, it's, it's hard because we wanted to capture everything.
Thank you.
All right. Roman, you haven't weighed in.
I'm fine with the recommendation of going forward with this one project and see if we can get funds from TERS for the second one, if that's what we want to do.
I'm good with it. Good? All right. Okay.
Perhaps motions on 6A, 6D.
So what we need to do first of all is approve 6.
6A.
Go ahead and approve 6A, and then we'll read 6B in, and then we'll need a motion and a vote on that one as well.
Okay. All right.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 12, that's 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. All righty. 6B.
Negotiation of an authority to execute a construction agreement with Eleknor Belko Electric Inc. for the Carroll Downtown Revitalization Program Intersection Improvement Project in the amount of $308,313.40. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Where are they from, Megan? They're not local, are they?
They're not. So they are out of California, but they do have an office out of San Marcos.
Okay.
I'll move that we authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the contract.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you very much.
There was just directions.
Just, okay, do you, are you comfortable? Okay, Council, are we all on the same page?
Thank you.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Okay, we will end with finances. Julie and Shelley, read a seat.
Yeah, everybody, yeah.
March 31st, 2023, a presentation of the Popular Annual Financial Report, PAPER.
Okay, so.
I love it, the popular, the popular financial report.
Fun stuff we have.
Our newest item.
Newest item. So I'm going to keep this kind of short tonight because we do have a special presentation for you. But I did bring a hand out so that there's a little more information there for you to take with you. And I'm going to try to use this new technology and see if I can. So just a little bit of information, we've been working through this asset replacement kind of facility maintenance budget team. And we told you, we did bring some information back to EA and his team last week. We still have some pretty preliminary findings, but we really feeling good about the information that we've gathered so far. So I think we'll have some good information to bring to you here within the budget process pretty soon. Continuing to work through revenue projections. It's kind of been tricky this year, but you know, we're just, we're just working through it as they come in and seeing how our projections fall. Department, we'll start meeting with the budget committee, so with admin and, and that entire team in May. So we'll start having bigger discussions on more detailed budget items. So closing documents have been completed for sale of revenue bonds. So we'll be getting that money into our bank account on the 11th of May. And we've already started working through allocation process so that we can know what those capital projects are potentially going to look like. Final interest rate of 3.96, we were super excited about that with an estimate of 4.60. So if that just tells you, you never know. People really want to buy stuff in Carroll. So that was largely because of the oversell, of the oversell. So about 13 times more bids than we needed. So it's actually really good. Stuart kind of stole our thunder, but we did get our budget award for 2023, actually way sooner than we're used to seeing it. So they must be able to work through things a little bit quicker. But we're proud of that. It's a lot of work to produce that document, but we feel like it's getting a little better each year as far as usability and that's what we're aiming for. Inflation flattening, I'm sure you all are seeing this happen from your seat at home. We're seeing a little bit more decrease on what we're seeing on price increase, if that makes sense. We're not seeing those big 15%, 20% jumps anymore. A little bit of leveling going on there. You know, the Fed's shooting for a 2% inflation. I don't know how long it's going to take to get there. They'll mitigate on May 2nd, kind of mixed reviews out there right now on what they're anticipating doing. So we'll just continue to watch that. Quick overview of the general fund, so property taxes 95% collected. That's about where we should be tracking right now. So as we talked about last year, we get the big influx at first and then it kind of starts leveling out a little bit. Keep in mind, that's current and prior year collection. So there's kind of a little mixed bag of, of revenues there. That's why you'll see it be a little bit more than the current budget line that you see in your budget book. Sales tax, $33,000 ahead of at budget estimate. Kind of leveling there and we're continuing to watch that really close and see what's driving that. You know, we know inflation's impacting everything, so some spending slowing and stuff like that. I read a, a report the other day that said the average income tax return checks that are being cashed at like Walmart, HEB, and that is less than it was last year. So you know, Chuck Todd tax credit is no longer what it was last year and some other, some other things changing. So different revenue stream. Service revenues right now, tracking better than budget, primarily EMS. Recreation's still running behind year-to-date. Now it's a little bit behind, sorry, behind year-to-date. Now it's a little bit behind, sorry, behind year-to-date last year, but also a little behind our budget estimate. So interested to see what the spring brings. You know, we've had some rain. That changes the river conditions a little bit, so yet to be seen on what happens with TERS.
Are you all gonna have a different outlook on budget for recreation with the big events coming up? And is that gonna be in that, is that gonna be in the recreation budget?
Some of it will. Some of it, you know, will be partially considered in sales tax, some of it will be considered in like KSP and those kind of areas. We're already, so when we did some bookings for KSP, they're receiving revenue now that really shouldn't be received till next year. So we're working through that process to kind of call that unearned revenue and then put it where it belongs because that will really skew the budget process. So we're working through that with parks and then also working with Julie Davis to see if we can have good communication with hotels to see how much pre-revenue they're getting and so we can make sure we're booking that correctly. But yeah, there's a lot of thought being going on right now. What's gonna happen in October?
And all those lines.
What's gonna happen in April and how that's gonna affect us and what all it is.
Those are both gonna be in one budget year, aren't they?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes. The good news is River Fest is on the same day as the October eclipse. So we already have an event planned there and we don't feel like the impact is gonna be near what it is in April. So we're already deep into the April process. So it's gonna be a pretty big deal. So anyway, I have some handouts for you so you can see a little bit more information on the general fund there. Just your same sales tax stuff. You can see, you know, the rolling average is kind of what we look at is where's the trend going? 6.9% increase compared to last year at the same time we were 15.8. We all know what was happening. So you know, it's just a matter of kind of knowing what's going on in the environment and tracking and budgeting that way. And if we do that, then we'll be okay. Trend lines are very consistent, just with smaller increases, so we'll just continue to monitor what's going on. Water fund, we talked about this in our forecasting workshop, but we're really happy with our water model. You can see what our better than, better or worse than budget estimate is right now. I mean, we're right on track with where we feel like we should be. Those are really close numbers, in my opinion. We just completed sewer averaging and we didn't see much variation at all. So that just tells me people are watching their usage and didn't have a big drop, but didn't have a big increase, pretty flat. So that shouldn't have an impact on us from a revenue standpoint at all. You'll see that expense shortfall there even out in April because we did update the budget amendment once you approved that on April 11th. So that'll clean itself up come the May report. So I'll be happy to take any questions on financial report if you have any. I do have a financial handout that I'll give you, and that way if you have questions on that, we can talk about that more.
Well, congratulations on your award.
Yes, that is fantastic.
May I touch to your whole department? Thank you.
Do what?
To your whole department, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Definitely not one person, for sure. Actually, citywide, if you think about everything that goes into that. So I'm gonna let Jacob take the podium, and so Jacob is moving into our finance compliance coordinator position here next week when he graduates from Shiner, so super happy about that. And he's put a lot of work in on this really since before our audit even started, and so this has been a several month process that he kind of took the lead on, and so I really wanted him to be able to present his own product. So you wanna...
Julie, just quickly, two quick factoids. How long has this person been with the City of Kerrville?
Eighteen, two years, almost two years.
Coming up on two years.
Be two years in June. Started with us, ended the intern, and it took us about, I don't know, eight weeks or so to go tell EA, nah, we need to keep him. He'd never been in an office environment before, so we were super nervous about it.
Where are you from, Jacob?
From Austin originally.
And you've been at Shiner for the last four years?
Four years.
He's about to graduate, and he's not only just about to graduate, he is also a candidate for being valedictorian.
Wow!
Y'all wanna find out the background?
This is awesome!
It's quite an honor.
And he'll be starting his master's degree the Monday after he graduates.
No hesitation.
Well done.
Why have you permanently?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Another new acronym, right?
Several.
The PAFR, not the caper.
Yes. So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's an honor to be in front of y'all tonight to present the City of Kerrville's Popular Annual Financial Report. Tonight, I'll be providing a quick overview of what the PAFR includes. However, I'm not gonna be going all into the financials because those are in the act for, and the PAFR is really just a shortened condensed version.
Jacob, you may be going in, I don't want to steal your thunder.
No, you're good.
But as I understand, this is the first year that we've...
Yes.
...done this compilation before?
Yes, this is the first year.
All right, very good.
So moving into things, before I dive into the City of Kerrville's PAFR, I want to give a brief description of what the PAFR is. The Government Finance Officers Association created the PAFR program in 1991, and it was designed to help make the annual comprehensive financial report easier to read and understand. The act for can be an overwhelming document when looked at because several funds, functions, and sources are grouped. The overall goal of the PAFR is to help get a better understanding for the common reader without a background in finance.
The Cliff Notes version, right?
The City of Kerrville's PAFR focuses on the statistical financial information contained within the act for. This is the first year, as I mentioned, that the City of Kerrville participated in the PAFR program. In brief, the PAFR is a condensed version of the act for that is easier to read. So we take this 166-page document, Cliff noted down, into a 24-page document that's easier to read and understand. So what's included in our PAFR? GFOA that requires that we disclose the following information: financial position, revenues and expenses, debt, and certain other financial information related to the act for. Some information that we also wanted to include were FY 2022 accomplishments, financials from the act for and budget, a brief overview of general and water fund, citywide fund balances, economic improvement corporation, and FY 2023 objectives. So when diving in the PAFR, some of the first information that you'll see is FY 22 accomplishments. We wanted to do this to show where city dollars were being spent and to provide an overview of what happened in FY 2022. Keep in mind that due to the PAFR being a smaller document, not all these accomplishments are gonna be listed. However, if you do wish to go look at all accomplishments, we encourage you to go to the City of Kerrville's website and look at our fantastic budget book, which we guys just got our word for. So just to go through a few of these, we have the groundbreaking for new single-family workforce housing in neighborhood and partnership with Lenard Homes, adopted a new parks and recreation master plan, the completion of the library ramp allowing access to Tranquility Island and Lewis Hayes Park, successful bond election for a new public safety facility, initiated the design process for Heart of the Hills Heritage Center, completed over $2 million in street maintenance, completed Loop 534 Ellenberger well, and continued focus on regional retail recruitment. Diving into the statement of net positions from the act for, the City of Kerrville ended FY 2022 with an overall net position of $101 million for governmental activities and $55.7 million for business-type activities. During FY 2022, current assets and long-term liabilities increased due to the issuance of general obligation bonds which will be expended on the construction of a new public safety facility. The statement of net position also does show unrestricted and restricted funds. Moving on to the balance sheet, the balance sheet often refers to a snapshot of financial condition at a given point in time. A balance sheet in simplest terms is what we own versus what we owe. And the balance sheet provides information on assets and liabilities. This information shows the reader the ability to pay for near-term operating needs and to meet future debt obligations. Onto some citywide financials. On the left-hand side, you'll see citywide revenues by sources, charges for services included 40%. This is mainly composed of EMS services and water and sewer services, as well as a few others. Property tax at 23%, sales tax at 18%. I'll touch on both of those in the next few slides. Grants at 11% and other at 8%. Moving to the right-hand side, we have citywide expenses by function. Public safety came in at 36%, water and sewer operations 21%, recreation at 18%, general government at 11%, public works at 10%, and interest and long-term debt and any golf course expenses at 4%. So moving on to the general fund revenues, the general fund is the largest fund in the city and is the main operating fund. Property tax makes up 35% of general fund revenue. The total amount of property tax assessed in tax year 2021 was $2.04. Remember that during fiscal year 2021, we're looking at tax year 2021, so the tax year always lags back a year than the fiscal year. Of that $2.04, 24.9% of property tax collected is directed towards the City of Kerrville. Sales tax makes up 31% of general fund revenue, and the top five sales taxpayers make up 30% of all sales tax collected. The top four sales tax categories were retail being at 55%, food service at 12%, manufacturing at 9, and wholesale at 5%. And then sales tax came back, as you remember, 1.1 million better than budget during fiscal year 2022. Moving on to general fund expenses as presented within the act for, I just want to highlight the breakdown of FY 2022 general fund expenses by function. A new function that you might not have seen or heard before is GASB 87. As you know, we love acronyms and all the acronyms that come our way. GASB 87 refers to the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement 87, which is a new accounting standard that has changed the way that state and local governments reported their leases. So this isn't a new expense, this is just how we have to report it from now on.
What is that, leases?
Yes. Leases that portray the right to use.
Year-end. Right?
Moving on to water funds. Water fund revenue is typically dependent on rainfall. Typically, consumers use more water in drier periods and less water in periods of heavy rainfall. And at fiscal year 2022, Kerrville experienced a drier year with only 12 inches of rainfall. Usually, that averages between 28 and 32. Good news is, we've been getting a lot of rain this month, so hopefully, I can't wait to look and see how much rain we've actually got. It's great to see, though. The pie chart illustrates water fund revenue distribution, and those blue boxes all are consumption-based revenues. One thing also to note is the overall net change position for the water fund was $521,817. This remaining access has been moved to FY 2023 with the council-approved mid-year budget adjustment, amendment, sorry. Moving on to hotel occupancy tax. Revenues for the hotel occupancy tax are generated from a 7% occupancy tax paid by guests of hotels and short-term rentals. These funds are heavily restricted by law and can only be used to support and bring overnight visitors to the city, to directly support the convention and Visitors Bureau and other very specific uses. Next, moving on to capital improvement projects, the city expended $7.7 million in capital improvement projects as shown in this list. Keep in mind, when looking at this list, we're not looking at all capital improvement projects that are shown throughout the city. These are just expenses for projects that kicked off or were in completion during fiscal year 2022. If you want to view all the capital improvement projects, please visit the City of Kerrville's budget document located on the city's website. Moving on to general debt service, we wanted to provide a highlight of current debt service to help the reader get a better understanding of what the city's current and future debt obligations were and to show what debt is EIC-supported. Moving on to citywide fund balances, I wanted to show a similar format to what you have used to be seen before in several council reports. This information is provided in the PAFR to help provide more clarity in interpreting and reading the act for. The act for is the general fund. In the act for, the general fund is grouped by the boxes in blue, and in the act for, the water fund is grouped by the boxes in yellow. So it's a little bit harder to confuse. A little bit harder to read because it's confusing. Moving on to economic improvement corporation, the City of Kerrville receives 1.5 cents of sales tax where every good of sales tax is applicable. Of this 1.5 cents received, a half a cent is directed towards the Kerrville Economic Improvement Corporation. Since the inception of EIC in 1995, EIC has contributed $59 million in quality of life and infrastructure projects in Kerrville. This is great to see, and the number has since increased since ending FY 2022. And wrapping up our PAFR for FY 2022, we wanted to do the same as what we did with FY 2022 accomplishments. And this is to highlight what city projects will be working on during FY 2023. As mentioned earlier, this is a condensed, smaller version, Cliff Note version of the act for, so not all of these objectives are gonna be listed. However, we encourage you to look at all the objectives in the city's budget book. Those completed so far are in blue. It might be a little bit hard to see, so I'll read them out. Establish a tree preservation ordinance, establish a dark sky friendly lighting ordinance, and we began construction on the Lewis Hayes Park fitness course.
So that tree preservation ordinance was the guidelines that we ended up doing guidelines rather than...
Guidelines.
No, it's okay.
Moving on, you might be asking, why are we doing this? The City of Kerrville, for the City of Kerrville, this is the last step in financial reporting to earn GFOA's triple crown. GFOA's triple crown recognizes governments who have received the Budget Presentation Award, the Certificate and Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and the Popular Annual Financing Reporting Award. And also to note, as of 2020, there were only 31 cities in Texas that had this award. So hopefully, we can be one of those.
This is really nice.
It really is.
It was this one I ran for council.
You did a great job on your presentation.
Fantastic.
Well done.
We'll nominate you for valedictorian, salutatorian.
I don't know what it's called.
Whatever it is, we'll nominate.
Second one, yeah.
If y'all want to come to graduation, I invite y'all out.
Now, this really is, it's well, well done.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And we'll get a copy, right? Oh, we, oh.
You can keep it.
There, that's right. Okay, okay, that's right. I'm sorry, it's right here, right here. Thank you, thank you so much. That's great.
We're proud of the team that Julie's put together, and we're glad that Jacob's a part of it.
Yes.
Good job, fine job.
Have copies that will be available for...
We have some tonight if anyone's here that wants them, and then we'll have them in the lobby. Good. We'll put some out there. We had some, we just wanted to wait.
Perfect.
And we'll post the link online, just like we do with the act for. We might get more people that actually read this one, so.
Yes.
Because it's pretty.